Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, September 29th, 2023, and I'd like to bring the meeting to order, please. I'd like to welcome our guests here and ask that we bring our conversations down so we can begin our work, please. Public comment will be taken today, both in person here in the John Farrow Council chambers and by teleconference. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Bloomfield, DeLeon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yowzlosky, 12 members present 12 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval, the minutes of September 27, 2023.
Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Price moves. Councilmember Hutt seconds, next. Let's run through the agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Items one through 11 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 12 and 13 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Very good. Without objection, those items are now before us, members. Do any members have any items that they would like to call special? Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to call item three special just for a friendly amendment. I need to amend the title of the square to read Coach Jose Quezada Memorial Square. Friendly amendment on my motion. Thank you.
Very good. We'll call that a technical amendment, assuming that your own amendment to your own motion would probably be friendly, so we'll call that a technical amendment.
You never know. You never know, but we'll call it technical.
All right. Thank you. Without objection, it'll be so amended. Okay. Any other items that any members would like to call special? Going once, going twice. All right. Madam Clerk, what is available now for us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items one, two, four through 11. And three will be a separate vote because it was amended. So, but at this point, council may vote on items one, two, four through 11, sir.
All right. I see no members wishing to be heard on any of those matters. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
And sir, for council may now vote on item three as amended to add the word coach to the square.
All right. Item three as amended is now before us. I see, Mr. McCosker, do you wish to be heard on the amendment or?
No, I will accept the friendly amendment to myself.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Very good.
I urge an aye vote.
Yes, thank you. All right. Then if there's no other members wishing to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Very good. So with that, it is my great pleasure to recognize Councilmember Price and Councilmember Hutt for a extremely important presentation today. Councilmembers, good morning.
Council President, good morning and colleagues. All right, all right, neighbors and friends. Let's give it up again for the SC marching band.
All right, all right, neighbors and friends. Let's give it up again for the SC marching band.
Other than the fact that it is an incredibly great way to start any day, why did we have America's finest marching band here in our council chambers here today? If you could explain.
Well, it's in the finest council district. But that's another story, Mr. President. But friends, colleagues, I want to just extend a special thank you and another special welcome to Allison Felix. Let's give it up. We also have some track students here from Jefferson High who are with us, and Allison, I just wanted them to see you up front and personal and to be inspired and encouraged and to know that they can achieve as well. But I also want to thank University of Southern California for their leadership on the permanent renaming of the former Cromwell Field to the Allison Felix Field. Let's give it up. Earlier this year, that could happen in April. And I'm more than honored to have Allison here with us today, again, just celebrating her many accomplishments throughout her short life. While the official Allison Felix Day has been established on April the 10th of this year, I am elated to be able to celebrate this befitting dedication with all of you today. There are many reasons why USC renamed their field on behalf of this outstanding woman. The field was renamed because of her status as a track and field legend, a legend, and because of her role as an entrepreneur and advocate for women. Let's give her a hand. She's proven to be one of the most exceptional athletes to ever live. Her 20-year career ended with 11 Olympic medals, seven of which were gold. It was at the 2004 Olympics in Athens where she began as one of the most notable Olympians of our time. Following her successful Olympic debut, she achieved a number of victories in her track and field career, from ultimately becoming the most decorated track and field Olympian in American history. May I repeat that? The most decorated track and field Olympian in American history. There's no one more worthy to have their own alma mater pay tribute to the icon and role model that she is. Alongside her tremendous athletic career, Allison plays a substantial role in advocacy for maternity protections in support of female athletes, who are commonly forced to choose between creating a family or furthering their career. She publicly spoke out against Nike's choice to deny maternity protections for all female athletes and influenced several major sponsors to establish maternity protections through and after pregnancy. It's only right, it's only fair. Eventually, Allison alongside her brother Wes, Wes, you with us? Not yet. He's on his way, I understand. He'll be here. You're right, L.A. traffic. But alongside of Wes, she created Seish, a footwear brand whose mission is to promote equity behalf of all women. In addition to her brother who's joining us, though, she does have three aunties that are here with us. Aunties, throw your hands up in the air like you just don't care. I'm proud to have been able to witness you, Allison, especially as a woman of color break barriers and pave the way for future female athletes worldwide. Allison, I've been looking forward to celebrating your trailblazing legacy, and I thank you for the contributions you've made and all of the hard work you have done. And I'm happy that you and your family are here with us today. Again, let's give another round of applause to our Olympic champion. And let me bring up another Olympic champion, our own colleague, Councilwoman Heather Hutt.
I got Olympic in the 10th district. That's about as far as it goes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Price. I'm happy to recognize someone who is from Los Angeles and has a home in the 10th district, and that's our very own Allison Felix. I was fortunate enough to go to this extraordinary celebration where they renamed the field Allison Felix, and the young people that were there that just wanted to look in her face, just wanted to hear her words, just wanted to understand what motivated her to be such an excellent athlete, was something to witness. So I'm so excited to be a part of this recognition in this celebration today. I do just want to elaborate on her advocacy a little more. She testified before the United States Ways and Means Committee on the topic of Black maternal mortality, stating that research shows that racial bias in our maternal health care system includes things like providers spending less time with Black mothers, underestimating the pain of their patients, and ignoring symptoms and dismissing complaints. That is a key part of why so many women die during childbirth, and I just want to take a second and thank you for that advocacy, because it's voices like yours that'll make a difference in policy and in procedure. Allison also played a substantial role, as Kern mentioned, about protections for female athletes, because they are also sometimes seen as more than human, that we don't have the same needs and that we definitely don't have the same rights. So thank you for that. Under the Obama administration, Felix served as a president's counsel on fitness, sports, and nutrition, an advisory committee dedicated to creating affordable and sustainable physical activity and nutrition programs to encourage healthy lifestyles among Americans of all ages. Allison's journey throughout life has shown unwavering determination and an unyielding commitment to making a positive impact on and off the field. I'm excited about her being here today, and I know that the work that she's done on the field is remarkable and the work she's done in her advocacy is remarkable. Oh, thank you. I'm proud to join everyone in celebrating Allison Felix's accomplishments, and I want to thank you for being an angel among our Angelinos, and today we celebrate you. So thank you.
We thank you. Next, representing USC, we've got the assistant track and field coach and a longtime friend of Allison. In fact, they, well, they've been friends for a long time, so let me just leave it at that and bring up assistant coach Joanna Hayes.
Good morning. I am really very honored to be here to not only...
I am really very honored to be here to not only represent USC, USC Track and Field, but also myself, as Councilmember said, as a longtime friend and former training partner of Allison. You guys know her stats. You've all heard all the wonderful things about her. So I really want to just talk a little bit about who she is as a person and what she means to the university and to all the communities that she represents here locally and around the world. As a graduate of USC, she always makes herself available. I don't know how that she does that. She's so busy, but she makes herself available for things as huge and publicized as the USC graduation commencement and as private and intimate as coming to the USC Track and Field Building to speak to the track team, just to talk to the women and encourage them and answer any questions that they have. I have just been very honored to really have a front row seat into the growth of Allison from a teenager. You saw the very first picture, the 2004 Olympics, when Allison as just an 18-year-old won an Olympic silver medal. And in that moment, she was not... She put herself on that stage to represent all of us. She wasn't... She didn't choose to be this ambassador and this advocate. Actually, I would say this chose her. So many things have happened in her life where people say, "Oh, she wins all the times. She has all these amazing medals and she's done all of these things." But in life, it's not that simple, and she's had to deal with so many obstacles behind the scenes. And not only did she fight for those... Fight for herself and come out on top, but she chose to speak about those things publicly. She chose to help other women and other athletes represent themselves and to bring about the awareness of maternal health. I didn't know about these things. I did not know about these conditions until she actually dealt with them, and that it hit me personally. And I don't know if I would have been able to be this advocate that she is. I don't know if any of us really have it in us until we're thrown in that situation and we have to make a decision. So she decided that she was going to be this representative, not only for herself, for her family, for USC, for the community, for Los Angeles, but for the world. And all of the youth, I'm sure all of you all look up to her, the student athletes at USC and all the other colleges in the country and the high schools around the world, look up to her as a role model, not just because of what she's done on the track, but what she has proven and who she has proven to be off the track. And I just want to share a really quick story about one of our recruits who was on campus a few weeks ago. And Allison had stopped by my office to do something really quickly, and so I didn't tell anyone that she was there. And I wasn't going to tell them that she was there and left, but somebody told one of them that she was there. And this little sprinter from Florida, when she found out that she was in the building and Allison Felix was in the building and she did not get to meet her, she almost started crying. And it's, you know, it's... You laugh, it's funny, because it's like, "Oh, that's so cute." But honestly, it's really, really deep and rich, because she really couldn't believe that she did not get to meet her idol. And I use the word idol and hero loosely, because we have to be careful on having idols and people that we look up to. But in this sense, I have never shied away from someone saying that Allison Felix is their hero or their idol, because I can't imagine a situation where anyone would be disappointed by looking up to Allison Felix and wanting to be like her. So again, I am just honored to represent University of Southern California, the University of Southern California Track and Field Team, and myself as a great and wonderful friend of Allison, and I am just so appreciative of what she has done for me, for my family, for all of our friends, and for everyone in this room and in the world. So thank you very much, and congratulations, Allison.
Thank you, Joanna, for your inspiring remarks. And now let's hear from the woman of the hour, the week, the year, the century, our own Allison Felix.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Price, for this honor, Councilwoman Hutt, City Council President Krikorian. I am completely, completely humbled. Thank you for your very kind remarks. Joanna, thank you so much for your words. You started out as a teammate and a track friend, and you became my family. And you were first an inspiration, as I watched you win your gold medal, and I wanted to be just like you. And now I'm just grateful that I get to have you in my life and ask you all the motherhood questions and all of the things. But I am just so grateful to receive this recognition. Anybody who knows me knows that I am a proud Angelino. Wherever I am in the world, it's probably one of the first things that I will tell you is what city I come from. And L.A. is just... It's more than my hometown. Growing up in Lafayette Square, it's where my dreams began. It's where I had my first introduction and falling in love with just moving, playing basketball in our backyard, riding bikes, swimming in our neighbor's pool. I grew up in our neighborhood. Then it was at Rancho Cienega Park, where I watched my mom walk the track over and over again, never realizing that I would have a future and later come back to train on that track. But I continued just enjoying playing with my brother and with other friends. And then it was across the street at Baldwin Hills Baptist Church, where I spent countless hours running around in the parking lot, in the Iwana Circle, and spending time waiting for my parents to finish up at church, where I continued just to enjoy running and playing. And so L.A. is where I got my foundation. And more importantly, it's where I learned about character and integrity and how you stand up for what you believe in. And I think it was truly a gift for me to grow up here, because I saw greatness up close every single day, whether it's being a Laker fan, a Dodger fan, going to USC games, going to theater productions, being around the arts. I saw people go after very audacious, ambitious goals, and it was just normal. And so when I had those dreams and those Olympic aspirations of my own, it didn't seem scary, because I saw that greatness all around me. So this is the city where I first laced up my track spikes, where I had those aspirations to go to the Olympics. And it's the city that gave me the foundation to be able to deal with adversity and the ups and downs that come along with any career, really. And I'm just so grateful that I get to not only represent my country, but my city as well. And so I'm so just humbled by this honor when they told me about it. I couldn't even believe it. You know, to get this from the city that I absolutely adore just means the absolute world to me. And I'm really grateful to have my family with me here today. I truly believe that you don't accomplish anything by yourself, and so this is their day as much as it is mine. I'm thankful to have my husband Kenny with me and my Aunt Smelly Ginger and Auntie Debbie all supporting me. And my parents are absolutely sick that they can't be here. I had to convince them not to change their travel plans, but they've supported me since day one and are so very proud. And so I just share this day with them as well. And so to the entire City Council, thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you, Allison. We're honored by your presence and by your spirit. You truly are an angel. And before we make these presentations, let me just share a quote from Allison, if I may. Quote, "Every morning, when you look in the mirror, ask yourself, 'Am I committed or am I not?'" When you remind yourself that it's a good day to have a good day. Those are words from Allison, and they certainly are true, Allison. We love you and we support you, and we're so proud of you. We'd like to present you with a token of our appreciation. Including something else, we go with those awards on the wall.
Thank you so much.
Well, as you're taking pictures, Allison, if I can just say how much we all appreciate your being here and appreciate your incredibly moving words about Los Angeles. This is the greatest Olympics city in the world, and you are one of our greatest Olympians. As a homegrown daughter of Los Angeles and ambassador for Los Angeles, we just couldn't be more proud of you. And not just because of your Olympic success, but because you've been such an extraordinary role model for so many people in Los Angeles and really around the world. So we're incredibly grateful to have you here, and we congratulate you on all your success. All right. Thank you all very much. Next, I'd like to call on Councilmember Padilla and Councilmember Soto Martinez for a very important presentation as well. Councilmembers, you'll have the floor. Councilmembers, good morning.
Good morning. So good morning, everyone. Buenos dias. In the spirit of Latino Heritage Month, as I had mentioned, I am thrilled to recognize and celebrate amazing members of the Latino community for their contributions to advancing our culture, our art, and our economic and civil empowerment. Once upon a time, I met a man named Ron Miller and Chris Hannan, who introduced me to this little book, who helped me in my quest to be a public servant, to be someone who always ran as a labor candidate. And now, so many years later, I'm proud to be here today and stand before you alongside with Councilmember Hugo Martinez, Soto Martinez, to introduce to you our distinguished guest, Ernesto Medrano, a trailblazing labor leader who has accomplished the monumental task of organizing worker power in one of the toughest environments, construction. After decades of leadership, construction and logistics, the works. After decades of leadership, Ernesto Medrano was recently elected in June of this year to serve as the current Executive Secretary of the LA and OC Building and Construction Trades Council, making the first Latino leader of the Building Trades Council in its long 120-year history. I cannot stress enough the importance of a Latino at the helm of the LAOC Building Trades Labor Council. As an umbrella organization of 48 local unions and district councils, the council represents more than 150 skilled men and women across 14 trades, with more than half of them union members being of Latino heritage. While Ernesto made a name for himself, building the labor movement across LA and the OC, he is a homegrown Angelino. Born in East LA to a union leader and a garment worker, Ernesto is a graduate of the historic Roosevelt High School. He then went on to graduate from UC Riverside with a joint major in Spanish and Chicano Studies, and he began his journey as an activist for the underrepresented by joining the labor movement with the United Farm Workers of America, becoming a field organizer for the American Federation of Labor Congress of Industrial Organizations. From there, Ernesto Medrano joined the Teamsters Local 952. In 2008, he was appointed to the locals as the locals' political coordinator, before making history as the first Latino to be elected to serve as the Executive Secretary for the LAOC Building Trades Labor Council. Medrano served also as the Building Trades Representative from 2015 to 2013, and was known for his dynamic coalition building. Outside of his work, Medrano has served as a proud Latino and Chicano leader. He has served as the Executive Board Member for the National Teamsters Hispanic Caucus and has been a member of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement in Los Angeles. And it is now my distinct honor to present him with this recognition today. But before that, I do also want to give my colleague Hugo Soto Martinez to share a few words on his honor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Padilla. I gotta get me one of these rosters. I didn't have one of those, so I gotta get one. So on Latino Heritage Month, we want to recognize Ernesto Medrano, as Councilmember Padilla said, the first Latino leader in the 120-year history of the LAOC Building Trades. And I think this is a wonderful example of how labor continues to evolve over the years. As we know, in their late 80s and 90s, there was a lot of debate about what kind of representation and what kind of leadership that we have. And so to have a Latino leader overseeing so many important unions, I think, is a testament to that evolution of the labor movement, because we know that when we have a multiracial, multi-working-class coalition of folks leading the labor movement, it makes everyone else strong. It makes everyone strong in the labor movement, including the folks that are not in the union but hopefully soon will be also part of the union. Now, when Ernesto got elected, I had not had the pleasure of meeting him at the time, even though I'd been in the labor movement for a very long time. So I did what every labor leader does, and you call the folks that you do know, and you say, "Hey, what's up with this guy Ernesto? What is he about?" And let me tell you something. Everybody I spoke to says he is an amazing person. He's been in the labor movement for a long time. He started with the UFW. He's tenacious, he's tough. And that's all I had to know about who he was as a person, because as a labor leader, as a former labor leader myself, I understand that when you represent workers for that long, and that's been a very long time, you gotta have a heart of gold. You have to deal with the long days of being away from your family and your kids, the countless hours that you have to put to do the work that you do, the weight of the representation, because you look your members in their eyes, and they put their trust in you to lead them to the right decisions. The challenging union meetings and decisions you've have to make over the years, those are all things... I know them very well, and you've been doing it for much longer than I have. And for that, I think we should recognize all the amazing work that he's done. And so it's been great to know him over the past few months, and I look very much forward to working with you for many years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those powerful words, Councilmember Soto Martinez. And now I would like to welcome to the podium Ernesto's daughter, a leader in her own right, a trailblazing Valley Latina leader, Sochi Medrano. Take it away.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Wow. I know you already have heard his resume of everything that he's been able to accomplish in his life, but I think there's something to say that I was part of that too, because he had to drag me along to a lot of these events in labor. But I'm really proud to be standing here, not only in my own right, but also standing here representing both my brothers. My older brother is a proud member of IBW. My younger brother is a proud member of UPS, Local 396. So this has been running through our blood since day one. There was honestly no other option, I think. I just happened to be the one to have been able to make the way different for myself. But I think I owe a lot of credit to my dad. He always knew how to embody the union household lifestyle, but with a lot of pride and with a lot of compassion. I took a lot of that with me when I decided to take on politics on my own way by graduating from Cal State Northridge. So I feel like I have a lot of love for my Valley peeps. Thank you for, Councilmember Padilla, for being a part of this as well. But then also being able to run my own campaigns and to be able to be my own organizer in my own right. All of that stemmed from the man right behind me. And to be able to stand up here to speak on his behalf as well is truly an honor. But I think what I always would love and appreciate, that I will always have this unique perspective as his daughter, but always understanding that he always respected me as my own political leader as well. I stand here also being the second Latina as president of the San Fernando Valley Young Dems, hoping to have more later on. And it's, again, it all stems from everything that he was able to embody. But let me tell you a few moments that I've had where I said, "Do I really want to keep doing this?" But I will always remember the first few times that I was walking precincts with my dad out in Orange County. Those were my training grounds. Those were the ways that I had to figure out what it was really like to understand working family rights, and not always about what was embodying a specific party. So I think that type of perspective does not always get recognized outside into the community and understanding not only what young professionals can do, but what young workers can do. How do you continue to represent them? How do you make sure that they have what it takes to be able to build a... to be able to build a community and the family for themselves that they want to have one day? All of that has always been embodied, and I think what I love most especially with my dad now is he's come home. He decided to move away to Orange County, decided to make that lifestyle for himself, and I had a hole down the fort here. And it's been good to know that whenever I have colleagues of mine that call me and say, that's Sochi's dad. It's not Ernesto's daughter. That's Sochi's dad. So I think I did something right there as well. But again, it's truly amazing to be able to know that all the hard work that my dad has put forth from a very young age is being recognized today. And his father, if he was here today, would be nothing but proud of him. My grandfather was always proud of the hard work and effort that my dad has put forth, and I know he's watching down on the both of us and really just loving every single moment to know that the Medrano name is continuing to move on into its legacy. So without further ado, I would love to introduce the first Latino Executive Secretary of the LAOC Building Trades Council and my old man, Ernesto Medrano.
Wow, the apple didn't fall far from the tree, did it? I want to thank the entire City Council, and in particular, Councilmembers Padilla and Soto Martinez, for humbling me in this recognition on Latino Heritage Month. On July 24th, I had the distinct honor of being unanimously elected by the delegates that represent 140,000 hardworking men and women and 48 affiliates of the 14 trades. And I've accepted this charge of leading the largest Building Trades Council in the nation. The story of Building, of the Building Trades is the story of the Latino family and the Latino worker. It is my family's story. I was born and raised on either side of the river, played football at Hall and Hyde Park, graduated from Roosevelt High School, and I'm the proud product of El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora, la reina de Los Ángeles del Río Porción Cula. Today, almost half of our union workforce is Latino, Chicano, Mexicano immigrants. Their children and now even their grandchildren and our rank and file, they are the padres and abuelos who bought their family's first home in Boyle Heights, Highland Park, or San Pedro, with their wages as cement masons, as ironworkers, as plasters, or electricians, or any of the other trades, who sent their kids to college, who opened up their own small businesses, who passed on their skills and their legacy. They got Dodger stickers on their work, on their helmets, on their hard hats. They're the backbone of Los Angeles. By honoring me, you honor them. As Latinos, we trace our roots to many countries all over Latino America. Today, the Building Trades are taking even more steps towards diversity. We are strengthening, strengthening the connection of the African-American community to the Building Trades. We are rapidly increasing the number of women in the trades, and military veterans are finding their place in the Building Trades through our Helmets to Hard Hats program. With local hire, we truly have a workforce that looks like Los Angeles. Our Apprenticeship Readiness Fund has now placed 1,356 graduates into the Building Trades Apprenticeships. Some did not have their high school diploma or driver's license when they came to us. Some were intimidated to have to tell us the truth about their background, like being justice impacted, until we told them, that doesn't matter, and it shouldn't matter. We can work with you to get a diploma. We can help you get a driver's license, and we will show the employers how your past experience is not, is an obstacle that you can overcome, and it is not a weakness. We have not done this alone. Your bold and innovative leadership have forged a great partnership, the City Council, the mayor, and the great city of Los Angeles. The City Council led the way for project labor agreements, and are now putting thousands of Angelinos into lifelong middle-class union careers. At LA World Airport, we're remaking LAX. At the Port of Los Angeles, we are bringing the port into a cleaner, greener future. And at the Public Works Department, we're on call for the infrastructure. At any city facility, the plumber, the electrician, the roofer, and waterproofer, they're Building Trades Union members. In addition, we regularly, regularly come to you to approve ambitious, all-union private projects, like the Lucas Museum, District NoHo, the Grand BMO Stadium, and the 2028 Olympics. We make an entire career of working on our hometown quality buildings that make a huge difference in people's lives. In one of the earliest PLAs with the city of LA was for the CRA, the City Development Agency. The CRA no longer exists, and then, and when we lost it through decision made in Sacramento, not LA, we answered the call to fill this huge app, in gap in housing production. In partnership with you, the City Council has passed Prop Triple H for affordable housing. With Triple H, we will build more than 10,000 units, and then in 2022, we topped that with Measure ULA. In the month of August alone, Measure ULA collected $26 million to build more housing, and it will change the landscape of affordable housing in Los Angeles. This in turn will enrich our local families, and that brings me back to where I started. Familia is everything for us. A union job is a ticket to the middle class, and it's a legacy for our future generations. Thank you for this recognition.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmembers. Mr. Medrano, congratulations, and we look forward to working closely with you in building the Los Angeles of the future. Congratulations. All right. Next, oh, Mr. Harris Dawson, I understand you had an amending motion on an item to be heard.
Yes, that's right. City Attorney, I believe, has it.
Very good. Which item is that, Mr. City Attorney?
So that's item 13, Mr. President?
Very good. If you could read the amendment, please.
Yes. So the motion reads that I move that item 13 be amended to replace the recommendation A as follows. A, reprogram $303,127 in the CDBG funds included in the program year 47, 2021 through 22, consolidated plan from the Mount Carmel Recreation Center and Park Improvements line item to the Richardson Family Park Playground Project line item.
Is there a second to this amendment?
Councilmember Hernandez, seconds. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Rahm, in seconds. Don't want to create an issue here. So, okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Rahm in seconds, and Councilmember Hernandez gives a thumbs up. So, all right. So, without objection, we'll take that matter up. Do we, can we take that up now, or do we, is that following public up? Thank you, but I would like to hear from what the city attorney has to say.
I'm sorry. The, the item's already being heard for public comment.
Very good. All right. Then we'll take that up when we're done. So let's go ahead and begin with our instructions for public comment, please.
Yes, sir. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted to the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted to the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on, and whether or not you would like to provide general public comment. You will have one minute per item, and because there are only two items open a day, you will have up to two minutes total for the items open for public comment, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are 12 and number 13 as amended. You may, of course, speak to any other item or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction during your one minute of general public comment. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you will need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your time and we will have to move on to the next speaker. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you hear in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute. Second, if you're listening to this meeting on another device, please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it is your turn to speak. Because of the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on another device. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to call a few names, and as I call your name, if you could make your way to your left-hand side of the chambers so that the sergeant can direct you up to the podium. You don't need to speak in the order that I call you, but please wait until I call your name before you come to the aisle so that we don't have crowding over there. We'll start with Candido, John Thompson Parker, Ann Seals, Amelia Borea, and Beverly Clark, please.
Good morning, Mr. President. Councilmembers, all items, especially 13, and public comment, please.
So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Item 13, as a member of the Cup Committee for almost 18 years, which oversaw community block grant dollars, when I see nonprofits being sacrificed to move money from their programs to, let's say, complete a park as what's being done today, I always wonder what kind of services are going to be denied to the, the community? Why aren't you going out to developers? Why aren't you going to other areas trying to find the money to finish the park? One of the things that happened with Delano Park was we were able to find funds outside of taking away from non, nonprofits. So my question is, you know, isn't there another way to do this? Isn't there a better way of doing this? I hope that they take a look at that. Let's move on to public comment. Public comment, please.
Go right ahead.
All right. I would like to submit this to the council. Sir, may I give this to you? This is in regards to what happened on Wednesday, Mr. Kocorian, and no disrespect, but you helped somebody break the rules. You told a woman how to break the rules. You told her like, well, everybody else does it, so why don't you take three minutes and then you can go ahead and speak on one item? That is against the rules, Mr. Kocorian. And then you tell a guy that's bald, the lady was blonde, you tell me, stick to the subject. Your city attorney says, stick, stick to the subject. Mr. Kocorian, you are our leader. You need to guide us and make sure that we do not get out of, out of line and stuff. So, sir, again, with all due respect, you were wrong on that, and I hope that we have clarification from you on how we should proceed in the future, because after you're gone in a couple of years, I'll still be here, and after Ms. Padilla's gone, I will still be here, God willing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Sure. Hi, I'm Amelia Barella from Councilwoman Nethia Rahm's district, and I am speaking in favor of the rodeo ban.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you very much. As a voiceover artist, I offer my services for free to animal organizations working to end animal abuse in all of its forms: entertainment, sport, and factory farming. Animals endure abject cruelty. To me, there is no difference between a beloved family dog and a bull or steer, a house cat and a horse. They are all animals, sentient beings that deserve a life free from harm and abuse. The horses, bulls, steer, and calves forced to perform in rodeos suffer from broken ribs, backs, and legs, torn tails, punctured lungs, internal organ damage, ripped tendons, torn ligaments, snapped necks, and even death. Please put an end to this inhumane sport. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning. Ruth Perry. I'm speaking general public comment.
Okay.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm Ruth Perry, President of the Retired Los Angeles City Employees Incorporated, also known as R-Lacy. I'm here along with Ann Seals, Membership Director, and Beverly Clark, Vice President, to speak on behalf of our 6,000 retired R-Lacy members to strongly encourage the City Council and mayor to consider and adopt the 2.6% discretionary cost of living adjustment, COLA, for retirees for the Board of Los Angeles City Employees Retirement System. On April 11th, 2023, more than five months ago, the Lasers Board voted to request that the council review the possibility. Nothing has been done. The council progress has gone silent. The Lasers Board shows it cares about its retirees by adopting a staff recommendation that the City Council and mayor pass an additional 2.6% discretionary COLA. What about you? Where are our representatives when our constituents need you most? Please agendize this matter as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Ann Seals, general comment from R-Lacy. The Lasers staff report noted a one-year increase in the local CPI of 7.4%. Like all other Americans, Lasers retirees are trying to grapple with the worst inflation our nation has seen in over 40 years. According to Lasers' last actuarial experience study, 36% of Lasers retirees and beneficiaries receive a pension less than $36,000 per year. In addition, a total of about 14,000, or 63% of Lasers retirees and beneficiaries, receive less than $60,000 per year. As you can imagine, these retirees and beneficiaries have been hit especially hard by the high inflation we all have felt over the last few years. Providing these and the other Lasers retirees, the additional 2.6% COLA will not fully return them to the standard of living they had previously, but it will help to make up for the sharp increases in rent.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Beverly Clark, public comment.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
It's time for you, the city elected officials, to break your silence. The city retirees, many of whom each gave decades of service to the citizens of the city, which reflected well on you, deserve better. At minimum, retirees deserve formal consideration of the 2.6% discretionary COLA and, at best, the adoption of the COLA. What will you do? Will you assist the thousands of city retirees who, through their hard work, help the city, the mayor, and you, the council, look good in front of your constituents? Please do not turn your backs on these hardworking former city employees who must deal with this once-in-a-generation high inflation on fixed pension. Again, we ask on behalf of our thousands of R-Lacy members, as well as the other retirees and beneficiaries, that you consider and adopt the 2.6 discretionary COLA. These actions would help Lasers pensioners...
Thank you. As our next speaker is coming up, I'm going to call a few more names. Brian Pittsburgh, Krishna Daly, Charlotte Williams, JoJo, and Kelly Lally, please. Good morning.
Hi. I just have resolutions and a proclamation, folks, for the council members, if they take this.
You can give them to the sergeants on your right. Which of the items you'd like to speak on? And good morning.
So I'll speak on, John Parker, Harry Tubman Corp., for Harry Tubman Center for Social Justice, and I'm going to speak on the general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Fight our opinion, fight our opinion genocide, yes. But not African genocide.
Cuba aids Africa and the people of African ethnicity here in the U.S. and Los Angeles. Your constituents, but in spite of the assistance and the lives lost in Angola defeat the apartheid regime in South Africa and secure the freedom of Nelson Mandela and being able to, ready to assist the victims of Katrina floods, your refusal to be a part of the effort to take Cuba off the terrorist list is enabling the suffering of Cuban people who, in some case, can't even get pain medications or making surgery possible. Every day, the career considerations over the suffering of people is inexcusable, especially since the Labor Federation passed the resolution to take this off the list. With two-thirds of the council members, you could be, make this resolution on the table today. What are you waiting for? More suffering?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning. I signed up under general. My name is Charlotte Williams.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
I am a retired LAPD employee, as well as United States veteran, and I stand here before you to ask you to follow along with your sister cities, sister states and unions that have already signed the resolution to take Cuba off the state-sponsored list of terrorists. I have gone there twice myself this year, and it's a beautiful country. And whenever there is a need in this world, Cuba sends a plane full of doctors to that need, which they did for us during COVID. And to thank them for their generosity, Trump, in his last week of presidency, put Cuba back on the state-sponsored list of terrorists for the simple reason of them going to Norway to broker peace for Colombia. If you don't believe me, it's in the it's in the records. You can read it yourself. Every year, the United Nations votes to end the 66-decade archaic blockade, and every year, the majority of the countries vote yes to end it. Please consider joining your sister cities. Alabama has already voted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, my name is Brian Pittsburgh, and this is a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Good morning, everybody. Councilmember Soto Martinez, I wanted to let you know there's a property in your district that might be a very good candidate for a tiny home village for the homeless. And I want to just make sure you're, see if I can follow up with you in some way to evaluate that property to see if it might be a good candidate for our tiny home village. That's it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Krishna Daly. I'm with Let Cuba Live. I'm here to bring attention, again, like the previous speakers, to the cruel blockade against Cuba and the state sponsor of terror designation put out against them by the Trump administration in the last few days of their reign. Los Angelenos do not want to take part in this immoral and illegal blockade. So many people have spoken out against it. The LA Fed, this Monday, passed a resolution in a show of solidarity that includes 300 unions, your voters. We do not and cannot continue to take part in this cruelty. Children are starving. People can't build homes. They can't get medical aid. They can't get basic medical care. They can't get any kind of care, and all because of us, all because of our designation. This is your time to do something so small that has such a huge impact. We cannot be to the right of places like Alabama. We are, we have a resolution right now that you can introduce, vote, and pass to end this. Please do something. Thank you.
Thank you. As our next speaker is coming up, I'm going to call a few more names: Maggie Vasquezeno, Mark Blunk, Matt Rosell, Scott Sheffer, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning. My name is Kelly Lally. I'm from Councilman Yaroslavski's district, and I'm giving general public comment in support of--
Okay, so you have, you have one minute.
Great. I'm here today urging you to support the city ordinance to support the rodeo ban here in Los Angeles, which ensures the humane treatment of animals in rodeos by prohibiting the use of painful devices such as electric prods and flank straps. The industry argues that these animals are bred to buck, but let's be clear, they're breeding these animals to be fearful of these painful devices: electric prods, bucking straps, spurs, in order to produce the most exaggerated effect. This is an easy win for the city council, and I invite you to follow in the footsteps of Pasadena, San Francisco, Irvine, and Napa County, which have already banned rodeos. Los Angeles will be on the right side of history to put these appropriate restrictions on these harmful rodeo devices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yeah, I'm Matt Rosell, and I'm talking during public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Matt Rosell. I'm the campaigns manager for the Animal Legal Defense Fund, and I live in CD-10. I'm speaking in support of Councilmember Blumenthal's rodeo ordinance. Children are negatively impacted by witnessing blatant animal abuse at a young age. Child psychologist Dr. Malgosia Sagelski has noted that rodeos may trigger or exacerbate a tendency to abuse animals in those watching. She says the violence of rodeos gives permission and even greater imagination for ways to abuse animals if people who treat animals with brutality are applauded and win prizes. Children are by far the most susceptible to lasting trauma, which may include intrusive images, nightmares, anxiety, and confusion. Kids should not be put in a position to be confused about why animal cruelty is applauded at rodeos. Please put an end to this inhumane entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Maggie Vasquezeno. I'm speaking for Women in Struggle, public comment.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thanks. I'm following the other speakers who are calling for this resolution to take Cuba off the state sponsors of terrorism list. In 2021, our own mayor, Karen Bass, along with another 116 other congresspeople, called for, sent a letter to President Biden calling for the removal of Cuba from the list. It's a simple, very small request that we make of you to pass this resolution. John Parker, when he came up, passed out copies of the resolution. We've been here before. It just resolves that we strongly urge President Biden and Congress and every federal representative in its jurisdiction to call on the federal government to remove Cuba from the United States list of state sponsors of terrorism and be it further resolved that we urge our congressional delegation to pass legislation that will eliminate the aspects of the embargo that have been codified into law. In the statement that our mayor signed, she said that the policy--
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning, councilors. I'm Scott Sheffer. I'm from the Harriet Tubman Center and from Let Cuba Live, L.A. In a few days, the U.N. General Assembly will overwhelmingly vote for the U.S. trade blockade against Cuba to end. They have done that 30 years in a row, and that's why I'm confident it will happen again. The majority of the world's population wants the economic war against Cuba to end. The state sponsors of terrorism list is the worst part of the blockade. Cuba can't buy industrial parts, fertilizer, medical supplies, or anything else. Chicago, Washington, D.C., New York City, Pittsburgh, San Francisco, Sacramento, Detroit, Baltimore, and other city councils all ask that President Biden take Cuba off the SSOT and end the economic punishment. State assemblies, county legislatures, union locals, and labor councils, including just Monday, the L.A. County Federation of Labor, have passed resolutions. Please, L.A. councilors, Los Angeles is a forward-thinking city. We want to see a world in which food and medicine cannot be used as weapons against children and old people and others. Please take whatever steps are necessary to--
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, my name is Mark Blunk, and I'm here to give a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, this is just to make a specific request to the chairs, Honorable Councilmembers Blumenthal and Honorable Councilmember McOscar in regards to the legislation for Council File 23-0418, which is the discretionary COLA for the retired city employees. I'm making a request, because I used to work as a legislative assistant, so I'm making this request because I know your committees are keystone as the two referral committees specifically for this legislation. And I would like to just request that you agendize it so that the retirees and some of the folks who are involved in this could have a voice and know that it's being looked at and it's being addressed on some level. So that's my basic request. I know that it's a key issue to get through the Finance Committee and through the Personnel Committee, and I appreciate and would respectfully request that you would agendize the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call a few more names: again Krishna Daly, JoJo, Arnold Sachs, Mike Greenspan, Rob Kwan, Stacy Cigar Bolinger, and Herman.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
I signed up for twelve, thirteen, and public comment.
Okay, so you have two, two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first.
Okay. Mike Greenspan, I thought Kern Price had a criminal trial going on. Oh, well. Now, let's go to, speaking of which, let's look at thirteen. I'm going to do it in reverse order because there's a very familiar sounding name: the Richardson name. We all know about that Richardson family. Is that the same one as the Kern Price Richardson he's married to? And is he going to be voting on that thing if he's not in court at his criminal trial? Now, we all seem to like to steal for our pet projects. What about, what about the showers? Didn't you know we've got an ordinance in L.A.? You have to take a bath every eight days. I don't know how we enforce it, but if you take showers away, people aren't going to be able to bathe or get clean. And the other thing, the Mount Carmel Recreation Center, they're getting fucked over too. All for what? Kern Price's family, his wife's family park or whatever? Now, let's look at number twelve. Good old number twelve, the Feinstein family. They're rich and Jewish, and they're buying a subdivision for about $9,000 or 91 pieces of Angelino Jewish toilet paper. And there's, that's the upfront cost. There's another cost, because this is Englander Jr.'s district. There's the paper bag cost. You know, the paper bag, Englander got two different paper bags filled with cash, $15,000 each, in a bathroom over there in Las Vegas. And of course, Lee was on that trip with him too. I don't know how much he got. I'm sure now inflation and everything else, he's probably getting bags of $25,000 cash. Those are the costs that we don't know. We'd know of the $9,000 for the Feinstein family, but we don't know how much they're paying under the table to Englander Jr.
General public comment?
Yes. Okay, Mayor Karen Bass and her Inside Safe program. Well, guess what? The grandstanding mayor failed. There was a guy, Anthony Garcia, he needed housing. And there was a caseworker, Armando Herman, and he called Mayor Bass's office and spoke to a guy named Eduardo, asking about a voucher. And what did Eduardo do? Well, he jerked his dick. That's all he can do. That's all he's done ever since he's been with people like Wetback Gill or Wesson or whatever. And did anybody come to the rescue of Anthony Garcia? Yes, Kevin DeLeon. He did the job. Maybe we, in this next election, we could run Eduardo from the mayor's office against DeLeon and compare the records. DeLeon doing his job, Eduardo jerking his dick, and see which one District 14 really wants: Eduardo or DeLeon?
Next speaker.
Circle K, I want to speak on all items on the agenda and non-public comment time, asshole.
So you have two minutes for items twelve and thirteen as amended, and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Yes, there are only two items open.
Just tell me, asshole. To smoke and scam, don't say that you love me, but communicate from the city engineer regarding Capostriano, Westerly Avenue, O Sausalito, whatever that means. But they're talking about a subdivision accompanying improvements under a contract like item number thirteen on this fucked-up, motherfucking, stupid agenda, which I find a conflict of interest, naming a fucking park after Richardson, Kern Price's former fucking wife, who's been stealing from the public through development. Well, let me read this into the record so that I am politically on topic, moron, jackass, idiot. So, physical impact statement: $9,064 for the processing of this final map, fucking pursuit to Section 19.0T, beef or bitch times three. Los Angeles fucked-up municipal code, number additions for funds are needed. But the Community Act statement states, fuck you, jackass, moron, nimbusel, foolish, bullshitter, liars. Now, item thirteen, boy. Where's the boy? Boy Dawson and mommy noodle up there. Yeah, block grant my ass. Richardson Family Park Program, I object. I want to name it Circle K in behalf of the attorneys, like former dickhead Mr. Peter Thomas, who stole from you through the DWP. Let's honor it, Circle K. Former attorneys suck a dick. Now, my general public comment. Smoke and scam, just tell me, don't say that you love me--
General public comment?
Because the problem here is this fucking program under 54953.3, where that jackass moron, simplified faggot, who's going to have, president has mentioned that you can't use multiple names, or that Brown Act states 54953.3, that I don't have to put a motherfucking name other than Little Boozy. Fuck the man with the badge. Fuck the man if you can. Run around the man if you can, but don't fuck with my free speech. Because under 42C1983, please, don't say that you love me, Mr. Aaah, because you're such a jaaah, you have to tell the people that they have to sign aah, under the color of law, moron.
Your time has expired. Next speaker, please. Sit down. Stop disrupting the meeting. Sit down. Mr. Herman, clear the podium. Get away from the podium so the next speaker can speak.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Morning. I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
For item number thirteen, I just like to note, I appreciate Grope being back here. I, there are council rules that say I can't direct my comment to an individual member, but those, of course, are not enforceable under the First Amendment. I thought it was interesting to see on Wednesday, Richie was cut off and told that he was unable to address the chair by name. to address the chair by name, and that's just something under the First Amendment you can't do.
Mr. Kwan, bring it around to the agenda, please.
Sure. To any of the members, I'll just go to general public comment. To any of the members I've given a hard time recently, please rest easy. Ugo has catapulted himself to the top of my shit list. On Wednesday, he effusively praised the bravery of our new Ethics Commissioner for willingly subjecting themselves to critical public comment. You kidding me? Critical public comment. In the same breath, Ugo would go out of his way to yet again smear Jamie York. This is the third time. Alex Johnson got warranted scrutiny, which really didn't exceed what our average neighborhood council member gets on a regular basis. Alex was not publicly humiliated by the Los Angeles City Council and swiftly thrown under the bus without the grace of a chance to withdraw his name or respond to concerns. Ugo has decided that's not enough. He wants to continue to punch down. The self-appointed champion of the people helped lay someone out and decides he wants to repeatedly kick them while they were down a month later. What a big, big, big man you are, council member. Bring Chief Moore in front of Ugo, and you've got a laptop. Bring a neighborhood council member, and he's going to repeatedly kneecap them.
Thank you. Mr. Kwan, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Kwan. Before we move on to the next speaker, Mr. Herman, I heard you speak and yell out during Mr. Kwan's comment multiple times. You've already been warned by the chair for not vacating the podium, so this is your second formal warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. We need to focus on the public comment. Sorry, which of the items would you like to speak on?
12, 13 and general public comment, please.
So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. So 12 is a parcel map owned by a company called the Feinstein Family Trust. I was looking at the area on this partial, around this partial division. It's a single-family neighborhood. It's not too far from the Westfield Topanga Mall, where there's, you know, a lot of business corridors. I'm just hoping that whatever the end goal of this subdivision, it's not to impose a huge development that no one wants in a single-family neighborhood that is part of the missing middle of housing that we're just letting developers destroy willy-nilly. I think these sorts of actions should be focused more towards commercial corridors and places with reliable public transportation. I don't know if, like, near this cul-de-sac where I saw this map is a good, maybe they're going to just put small homes there, and that would be great. Item 13, I don't, I don't understand why, when we're looking for places to move money around and the budget, we're taking funding from a shower trailer, a mobile shower. I mean, I bet we do need investment in that park, the playground, that's, they're both worthy things, but we're really looking for money in places that we can't afford to sacrifice. I ride the beeline several times a week. The other day I got on the train, and it, like, it smelled like shit. Like, I had to go to a different train car, and it's not these folks' fault because they don't have a way to clean themselves. But you're taking money out of a shower program for a park. I'm sure there's plenty of other places we could take it from. I think maybe we should take it from your salary. Y'all make way too much. You're out of touch with the typical worker and family because y'all are rich and most of us aren't. (music playing) And I know the secret's out now that I'm running for the seat held by Councilmember Ramin, and I'll need your help to beat these establishment grifters. They should all be ashamed. They break all the rules on behalf of their donors. To them, it's a political game. And I'll do my best to win, and I'll call them on their lies. I don't know if I can get all the signatures needed, but you know I'm going to give it a try. I'll need all the help I can get. I'm the underdog after all. I need qualifying signatures later on in the fall. Stacy Segarra-Bollinger for CD4. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Good morning, sir. I'd like to speak on 12 and 13 and public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, item 12 refers to a parcel map. It's nice to see that the city council has done away with Quimby fees. Quimby fees were created to create parks in city council districts. You have no more Quimby fees, which means no more parks. What the fuck are you doing? You're just stealing public money. You used to have Quimby fees all the time. Developers were required to allocate a portion of their funds to Quimby fees so they could be developed into public parks for the people who lived in that district. All of a sudden, there's no more Quimby fees for the people who live in that district. What the hell is that? That's the stupidest shit I ever heard of. It's not quite as stupid as having the KKK in this city council chamber. We had an African-American dressed up as a Grand Wizard, and you haven't honored that yet. Why don't you honor that? You have USC in here, why don't you honor the fact that you brought the KKK into this city council chamber, had an African-American dressed up as a Grand Wizard?
So, Mr. Sacks, I can't tell which of the agenda items you're speaking on, so please stick to items 12 or 13, or we'll move you to general public comment.
Okay, general public comment.
General public comment.
So I'm glad somebody brought up the fact that Barack Obama was the president. This item on here in the, in the agenda for the County Board of Los Angeles, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, item A9. Mark Ridley-Thomas wants to repeal the Affordable Care Act. How can you repeal an Affordable Care Act that was signed into law by the President of the United States? How can a supervisor go ahead and do that when in fact he didn't do that? I have a scan here. It's a, it's a, it's an enrollment form for care. It says ethnicity, race, ethnicity. There's a box, Caucasian slash white. What is the difference? There's a box here that says Hispanic, Latino, Latinx. There's a box here that says African, African-American, black. What is going on with this bullshit?
Mr. Sacks, your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired, Mr. Sacks. Your time's expired. Have a seat, please. Have a seat. Move away from the podium. Next speaker, please. And I'm also going to call Paul Roberson and Suzak, please, and that will be our final speaker.
Hello, Grant Rising, everybody. Again, Paul Roberson. I address you today as a proud Angelino and a proud member of the L.A. Hands Off Cuba Committee. We also affirm and express our solidarity with the people of Cuba. We strongly condemn the inhumane, immoral, and unethical blockade and support Cuba's right to self-determination and freedom. We demand that the Biden administration immediately end all financial and moral support to organizations used to violate Cuban national sovereignty and the right of the Cuban people to run their own affairs and to determine their own future. We demand that the United States government conform to international law and resolve any differences with Cuba through diplomatic channels and not through subversive sabotage. To this end, we are asking you, our elected officials, to publicly condemn and demand these changes in U.S. foreign policy. We ask this body to support Cuba in this endeavor and join in the call to confront neo-colonialism and right this egregious wrong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please, and this will be our last speaker in the council chambers, and then we'll go to the phones.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
All of them.
So the items that are open are 12 and 13 as amended, and so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please stick to the items first.
My name is Susan Rocha. I live in CD1. I've been prosecuted by two different priests in two different court cases, falsely accused of crimes.
So, Speaker, this is not on the agenda for items 12 or 13, so would you like to move to general public comment, or do you want to speak to items 12 or 13?
Well, what are 12 and 13?
So, it appears that you have an agenda. If not, the agenda is in the back, but items, the items that are open are only 12 and 13.
Okay, I'll just move to general public comment, then.
General public comment?
Okay. I was prosecuted in court by two different priests. Priest Albert Pragazam and priest Marco Ortiz, falsely accused by two different priests. Both of them lost in court because what they said were lies. Divine Savior Catholic Church, and I was falsely prosecuted by a city attorney, Mike Furr's office, because he doesn't know what his city attorneys do or his prosecutors do. So they falsely accused me of a crime. I was found not guilty at trial with 12 people believing me and not Priest Albert Pragazam on the stand prosecuting me for something that he never saw because it never happened. What kind of BS is that? Is that what you, you need to stop prosecuting the innocent like me. That's not justice, and that's not ethical, and it's not moral. And there's, people are railroaded every day, all day long, like cattle in these courtrooms because you don't watch out for those cases to see who really is innocent, and you don't care if they're innocent. You just rubber stamp them. That's all you do.
All right, thank you very much. Your time has expired. Your time has expired. Thank you. I had one other speaker who signed up just with the initial J. I apologize. I thought that was a duplicate. So come on, come on up, and then we'll go to the phones after the speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. This is in regard to general public comments.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
You might have to check this information through local news sources. It's in regard to these tremendously large ships going into neighborhoods such as Santa Monica, but west of Santa, west of Santa Monica, and causing great damage to the property, to the property owners there. You can check that through, I've seen a picture of it, but you can check it if you need to. These huge ships are going into that area, and they're cutting off property. They're also sinking the floor of the ocean down lower. This causes property damage, and it cannot be replaced because these properties, as they're cut off, they fall into the ocean, so they can't be replaced. If necessary, you can check this if it's important to you through the local news sources.
Thank you. We'll go next to our first caller on the phone, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
This is Andrew Riddick for general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
I wanted to thank the city attorney's office for providing guidance to at least one office I'm aware of regarding my direct submission to the L.A. City Council for consideration of the name "The Entertainment Workers of L.A." on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I believe that name reflects the outstanding members of the entertainment industry that have yet to be recognized on Hollywood Boulevard and who serve as the backbone of that industry. On September 22nd, former President Trump attacked the former chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, General Mark Milley, on his social media platform, Truth Social, suggesting he should be executed. He then referred to the U.S. media as the, quote, "enemy of the people" and said they were treasonous. Los Angeles is still honoring Donald Trump with a city-sanctioned honorific on our public right of way. Councilmember Lee's office has received or will receive very shortly from the city officials my Walk of Fame submission with my intent for this council to replace the location of Trump's name with that submission. For transparency's sake, Councilmember Lee and others here attended the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce's Political Action Committee fundraiser on September 12th at the Godfrey Hotel, including city attorney Heidi Saltz and Soto. I'm sure Councilmember Lee will follow the speed policy under Council File 78-49.
Caller, your time has expired.
Caller, which item would you like to speak on?
All right, this is general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
All right. Condolences to Paul for having the good job today. Um, yeah, it was like two days in a row. Yeah, Kevin needs to resign. Um, you know, it's absolutely ridiculous that Kevin DeLeon is still in the council. But, yeah, um, your political career is destroyed, um, you'll never be able to run for Feinstein's seat. Yeah, um, but we need to stop targeting, you know, people. I mean, I literally watched the video of you removing Jason on Wednesday. You literally were proving his point as you were giving, you were removing him. You were, you know, you gave him no warnings, but you continued to give Herman warnings when he was disrupting. Um, you know, a neo-Nazi. Um, so, yeah. You let the neo-Nazis do whatever they want and remove the Black Panthers. Vote for Stacy Segarra-Bollinger from CD4.
Caller, which item would you like to speak on?
Yes, hi, this is Jason. I'm a smoke and scan viewer, as you all know, but today I just wanted to like hit out with a few words, if it would please, sir.
Is that general public comment?
Yes, sir, if you would.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Ah, thank you, there. Yes, first time I saw my stoddy-dodgy doppelish angel, I remember that damn thing like yesterday. It was a loose, I mean, I was a bound, stalling, house, a skate stone, you know? Smooth like a hot comb on nappy ass hair. I woke up on her, I was almost paralyzed. I met the smell of sweaters in a plate of yams, the next was syrup. Eyes beaming like who cares if the deep tits blind in the niggas. Felt like I cheated all that president in my heart, beating so damn fast. Never known this moment, freaking out a life, into this world. Funny how it comes together from time you dig. One moment you think of the booty club, and the next four years, you're in somebody's dollar, bringing your own yam. Now, that's the beautiful thing. That's usually on top of your game, man, and it's a real-life Jason that is. Same gambling baby doing that dope money might not always be sufficient, but you're not a parcel, certainly people that fought off didn't call you back because you had cloudy tits. So now you're back in a trap, just that trap. Go ahead and mirror it on that for a minute. Smoke and scan will be on tonight, so these jumping, come in, get a little figure of action there, might get a few ZUAs and see what's going on. Y'all have a good weekend. Peace.
Caller, your time has expired.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Can I speak on 13 and general public comment, please?
13, so you have one minute for item 13 and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, council. I just wanted to say that I do support number 13, and I just wanted to say that definitely we do need, um, members, I do support the program. Sanitation's very important. However, I would like to see Councilmember Ramin and Councilman Harris-Dawson to look into deploying porta-potties to every single homeless encampment to help keep the streets sanitized, because we don't want to see homeless people defecating in the streets, urinating, and that creates a public health hazard. And we definitely do need sanitation. We just like to see that Councilor Harris-Dawson and Ramin add more to the shower program. And I'd like to go to general public comment next.
General public comment?
Yes. Um, good, council, I just wanted to let you folks know that, that we've been seeing a stream of burglaries taking place, not just in the state of Los Angeles, but all over Southern California and Northern California. Now, in Glendale, I would like to tell you guys that, not just Glendale, also in Los Angeles, we've been noticing a stream of smash-and-grab break-ins, and the most, we see a pattern of these crooks breaking into businesses like around 2:00, 3:00, and 4:00 a.m. in the morning at mom-and-pop businesses. So I'd like to ask that this council to correspond with the chief, Michael Moore, into looking to deploying officers to patrol areas where there's the most frequent break-in, and these are mom-and-pop businesses for the backbones of the economy of the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. And just please take into consideration that, that when businesses lose money because of break-in, that's a loss of tax revenue for the city and the state and the federal government. Please take that into consideration. Please take that into consideration.
Next caller?
Caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits 2988, please press star six to unmute.
Caller with the last four digits 2988, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to unmute, or unfortunately, we're going to have to move on to the next caller.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits zero, eight, one, three, zero, please press star six to unmute.
Morning, ma'am. This is Brock Landers, Los Angeles private detective. How are you doing today?
Good. So which of the items would you like to speak on?
I would like to speak on 13 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for 13 and one minute for general public comment.
So on 13, I think all of you people with your soap privilege need to stop moving away from the people that smell. It's not their fault. If everyone acted the way that you do with your type of hatred and people with soap privilege, nipple dick's mom wouldn't have any customers. General public comment. I've been trying to get out and shake some shells, if you know what I mean. Hey nipple dick, it's scan, not scam. Put some respect behind it when you say it. El Diablo Blanco is the only reason I stopped talking about your mom. Stacy for CD4 as long as she can't sing at the horseshoe. Brock Landers can do some fundraising for you, Stacy, if you know what I mean. And I've eaten some disgusting tuna in my day, but I'm never eating another lobster. That poor caller that calls in that you guys traumatize, I feel for the kid. To the lady before, SpongeBob will be okay if they move his house down a little bit lower. And to address the best athlete from LA, that's obviously Kylie Jenner, or, excuse me, Caitlyn Jenner. She's the only woman to compete with men and win. Everybody have a spectacular weekend? Remember, smoking, scan.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Yeah, my name's Kai Kater and a general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up the fact, you know, we always see these Latin American, you know, history months or whatever the hell you guys call them. But, you know, us white people never get a European American history month. And I just, why is that, you know? You get the niggers get theirs, the Jews get theirs, and we're just left, you know, to be sitting here with nothing, you know? People like to silence our voice. You know, white people are all racist and colonizers. When we let the Jews take over our country and flood our borders with a bunch of niggers and beaners, and we're supposed to just sit back and not say anything about it? But white people are going to start standing up. And right now, we're using our voice. But pretty soon, when you guys keep censoring us like the Anti-Defamation League, it's no longer going to be us using our voice. And it's going to turn to violence. Hail victory, white fucking power.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Which of the items would you like to speak on? Caller, please press star six to unmute yourself, or we're going to move on to the next caller. Which of the items would you like to speak on? Next caller?
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
All items and general comment for the goat puppet, sir.
So you have two minutes for the items. That would be item 12 and number 13 as amended, and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Yes. And we have a shower statute. Yes, you want the people to start bathing. Where are they gonna bathe? Where are they gonna bathe? Inside the waterfall over by the Grand Park? Are they gonna bathe in the bathroom? People that can't find water can't wash themselves. But remember, everybody there in the city council, remember to wash yourselves if you've been within a distance of unisex who tested positive for COVID. You don't want to get COVID. You want to wash yourself. And then we have the track map. The most despicable thing I've ever seen in my life. Why, why is that? Well, because human, it looks like the shape of a dick. And I don't want any property lines to look like the shape of a dick. Yes, these goddamn maps, we need to stop doing them on Fridays. When goat puppet can't look at his video. When goat puppet has to wait an hour for the marching band from that filthy fucking USC, that piece of shit's overpriced school. Fuck USC. And now we'll get to the general comment period if I may there, Mr. Circle K. Better known as ambulance chaser one. Yes, now, we would like to give our memorial to the great one, Dianne Feinstein. Who will be the last Jew to be ever elected to the Senate from California. Let's give her a hand. Oh, yeah. That's right. And we only have one Jew left in the city council, and when his term is over, there will be no more Jews. And then they will have to go back to doing what they do best, paying off politicians to do their evil. Rest in peace, you old cunt. And to your driver, that Chinese spy driver, I want to give you a shout out. Yang yang, jian jian, jian bian jian. Huang yu yang yang, jian jian, jian. Dianne Feinstein, yekan jian, ha shang jian. Oh, you got your yong bao ke jian jian. Yi deng ke tai yi dang, dong di a xie dang.
Caller, your time has expired. Caller, your time has expired. And so for members of the public who are here in the council chambers or who are listening in for the first time, please know that the comments that are made or the language that's used or the stereotypes that are used during public comment are not anything that this body approves of, supports, or condones, but we do have to let them speak during general public comment, so.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
A general public comment from DanielGus.substack.com.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Sure, council members, two days ago, Unicef Hernandez canceled the committee meeting claiming that she tested positive. She has not since said that it was a false positive. She hasn't taken down the tweet about her positive test, yet she was there this morning in violation of city COVID guidelines, breathing inches away from Councilmember Harris Dawson, inches away from the face of Heather Hutt, inches away from your Olympian gold medalist guest, Allison, inches away from the USC marching band, inches away from members of the public. Mr. Kokorian, what is going on here? Hernandez tested positive two days ago and hasn't rescinded it. She is breathing in your face, putting everybody at risk and in violation of what you're telling millions of other people to honor in terms of this. You need to file an investigation because if she misused phone lines to mislead the public and cancel a public meeting.
Caller, your time has expired.
That could be why.
All right, thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hello, thank you.
Which of the items would you like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on all items and general public, please.
Okay, so the items that are open for public comment are items 12 and 13 as amended. So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Take your gigantic head. Don't say that you love me. Don't say that you love me. Nothing is better than night.
Okay, it sounds like you want to go straight to general public comment, right?
No, 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 I want to go general public, okay? You know what?
You want to go to general public comment?
USC stands for unusually.
Okay, general public comment.
Which is better than UCLA, which stands for ugly Caucasian living with Asians.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, user three, which item would you like to speak on?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
12, 13, and then public comment, please.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first.
Hey, wow, we have a diverse group of people in the community, don't we? Number 12, the Feinstein family is involved in that project there. And recently, on the website GTVflyers.com, I got some information about the Jews' overrepresentation and positions of power and authority in our country. I worry that the Feinstein family might be using some of their Jewish influence to manipulate this board. We've seen how the ADL does that with their strong-arm tactics to silence the speech of white people primarily. So I'm worried about the Feinstein family. I'd look into that because the Jews are also very well-known for bringing slaves to our country. They've done a lot of bad things, and I believe they're probably doing something bad with this number 12 as well. I'll move on first. That's true stuff. You should look it up, find out what Benjamin Franklin said about the Jews. Number 13, I'd like to go into the showers for the bums. And I feel bad for some of these people who are homeless. Because I have a heart, I'm a Christian man, altruistic, and like to help others as long as they're not stealing my country and trying to stink my race. But I do believe that the bums need somewhere to shower. But the guy who said you should move away from us, do they stink? I mean, geez, these guys do stink pretty bad. I don't know what they're doing for our country. And 50 years ago, before the boomers ruined our country, we didn't have to deal with the bums acting like this. They would be ashamed and they would try their best to get themselves out of their predicament. But now these guys are a big pain in our neck. And that's mainly because groups like the Jews, the Jews run these.
Okay, it sounds like you want to go to general public comments. Let's start general public comment, please.
Sir, general public comment. I like that comment about nipple dick. That was hysterical. And this is a great meeting. But the Jews in general have too much power. When people blame whites for everything on your ordinances that talk about equity, affirmative action just got thrown out of the Supreme Court. Now you're doing equity like you think that that's not going to get thrown out. Everybody knows that's illegal, un-American, unconstitutional, but you're doing it anyway. And then anytime a white guy speaks out against anything, you get the ADL and that slow-mo Greenblatt in here, and he just complains and cries in the river, gives you guys a bullet points on how to control our free speech. Kudos to you guys for not controlling free speech. You've got a lot of whack. But there are a lot of white people who are sick of getting the double standard shit end of the stick, and we're going to be standing up. You're going to see this, white people stand up. It's time to unite and fight this bullshit that we've been dealing with in this country. White people, stand up. It's time now. Thank you.
Caller, user four, which items would you like to speak on?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on 13 and general public.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 13 and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Okay, so for 13, addressing the homeless hygiene product and, you know, that whole thing. My name is Mike Johnson, and I'm here with the Kosher Soap Foundation. And we want to give out 6 million bars of free soap to all the homeless people in Los Angeles and the greater area. And we've adapted a German science to make our soaps, a kosher soap. What you do is you take a Jew and you boil him in oil, and you remove the fat from his bones. And we use this Jew fat to make wonderful bars of kosher slawter soap. And we like to make 6 million bars of these, beautiful bars of soap, and hand them out to all the homeless in Los Angeles and the greater surrounding area so they can wash and bathe and have proper hygiene like everybody else. Because it's not fair that these homeless have had all their money stolen by Jews, you know, and that they have to stink and live on the streets in filth and slawer. So that's what the Kosher Soap Initiative is doing. And I think you should all look into the Kosher Soap Initiative, try to get.
General public comment?
Try to get on board with us and help us, you know, round up the Jews and, you know, we can get on our way making the soap. You know, and if anyone wants to learn more about this, you can go to GTVflyers.com or Watch Europa.com or check out on BitChute, it often were the greatest story never told, 9/11 missing links. Because we all know that the Jews did 9/11. Smoking scan, I'd like to address you because I know you're watching and all your weirdo fans. You are a fat Jew. You are a conniving, scheming Jew. We can see it through your fatness. You have that hooked nose and that devious laugh. You are a devil. You are a devil Jew, baby penis sucking Satan. Hail Hitler, hail victory, white power.
All right, I think that will conclude public comment on all agenda items and general public comment. So, Madam Clerk, what is now before us?
Counsel may now vote on item 12, sir.
Very good. Item 12 is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Very good. Next order of business?
Next would be item 13 as amended, sir.
That item is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes. Mr. President, I understand that there is a request for item 13 to go forth with. Is that correct?
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's the next item before us?
Motion, council has motions for posting a referral?
Without objection, posted and referred?
That clears the desk, sir.
All right, Councilmember Rahman.
I was just, wanted to make a request for item 13 to go forth with. Is that what we just said? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes, it was item number three has been ordered to go forth with, yes. All right, members, do we have any announcements? Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much. I have news from the 1-5.
We're always eager to hear news from the 1-5.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to share that we have two exciting, two exciting and special events going on in Watts this weekend. On Saturday, September 30th, the Watts Towers Center campus will be hosting the 41st Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum, Day of the Drum Festival. It's a really great, a lot of fun. Then the next day, on Sunday, the Watts Towers Arts Center campus will be hosting our 46th Annual Rodeo Watts Towers Jazz Festival. So we'll have the Day of the Drum on Saturday and the Jazz Festival on Sunday. Lots of fun happening at the Watts Towers, always, but particularly this weekend. These festivals are great, free. They're free, all-day events from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the beautiful Watts Towers, which is at 1727 East 107th Street in the 1-5. Come for a celebration of artistic expression, collaboration, and incredible music. You'll hear jazz improv, percussion beats, and wonderful dance exhibitions, all of which will showcase the great cultural and musical diversity of our city of the angels. So don't miss out on this unique celebration. Spread the word, bring your friends and family. Let's celebrate the power of jazz and the beat of the drum with great music, great food, family fun, and art. You can make new friends, you can be part of a community that believes that art is accessible to all. We can't wait to see you this weekend. It's going to be a lot of fun. Come on out to Watts. I'll see you there on Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, members? Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise to announce that this coming Monday, on October 2nd, we will be unveiling the newly designated Jamal Khashoggi Square outside the Saudi Arabian consulate in CD11. And Council President, thank you for co-introducing this motion with me. On October 2nd, 2018, Saudi dissident journalist Jamal Khashoggi was murdered by the Saudi government while his fiancee waited for him outside the Saudi consulate in Istanbul, Turkey. In December 2021, the District of Columbia City Council voted to rename the street outside the Saudi embassy Jamal Khashoggi Way. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to travel to Washington DC and met with Democracy for the Arab World Now, an organization that Mr. Khashoggi founded prior to his murder. We visited Jamal Khashoggi Way together and talked about how the signs and the location would serve as a reminder to the entire world about what happened. So I'd like to invite all of you to join us on Monday. We will have special guests and speakers while we unveil Jamal Khashoggi Square in CD11. My team will be sending out an invitation with all of the eventee. My team will be sending out an invitation with all of the event details and we will look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, members? All right, if there are none, I'd ask that we all rise, please. Members, today, we got news of the loss of one of California's greatest and most admired leaders. Somebody who bent the arc of history, both for our state and for our nation. Senator Dianne Feinstein, who we lost today at the age of ninety after an incredible historic life of achievement and inspiration to so many. Dianne Feinstein served on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors at a time of unbelievable conflict and divisiveness in that city and around our country. The kind of conflict that tragically led to violence in San Francisco City Hall when a disgruntled man with a gun took the lives of George Moscone and Harvey Milk. Dianne Feinstein was close at hand when that happened, when the murders occurred. She heard the shots. She was first on the scene when Harvey Milk lay dying in his office. And it was that that brought her to the attention of the country and of the rest of our state. It fell to Dianne Feinstein and her role as president of the Board of Supervisors to let the world know about this tragedy and then to take leadership, take the reins of leadership in San Francisco in the aftermath of it. That same day, she led a meeting of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors, having just left the scene of the murder of her colleagues so she could let San Francisco know that there would be continuity of government, that there wouldn't be an interruption in leadership. As mayor of San Francisco, Dianne Feinstein presided over much of the early days of the AIDS crisis, which impacted San Francisco disproportionately compared to the rest of the country. And she often pursued the necessary and often controversial public health measures, controversial at that time, that allowed lives to be saved. Senator Feinstein was the subject of not one, but two assassination attempts. She was, the windows of her house were shot out. Her young daughter found an unexploded bomb on the steps of their home. But through all of that, she persevered. She continued to lead with courage, with dignity. And she became the first woman in our state's history to be nominated as a candidate of a major party to run for governor of California. She didn't win that race, but soon thereafter, she became our United States Senator and it may come as a surprise to some who are here now. But at that time, that was a monumentally important historic landmark because, you know, a woman taking over as California's first female senator was not only groundbreaking, but it kicked open the door for so many other great women leaders who would follow. And in her first term in the United States Senate, she already started to make impact that would that would really have an impact on our entire country. Most notably perhaps, as the author of the first assault weapons ban, which no one thought could pass. Even the then-chair of the Judiciary Committee, now-President Biden, thought that there was no way that the assault weapons ban could pass. But Senator Feinstein saw it through and she found a practical way to approach this. She even reached across the aisle and asked for input from the NRA itself in crafting the assault weapons ban. They didn't provide it. They declared war on her instead, but she made that effort. And it was typical of the kind of leadership that she exercised throughout her time in the United States Senate. And as a result, we had an assault weapons ban which saved countless lives until Congress allowed it to expire. She never quit in her effort to try to reinstate it. And I hope that the members of Congress that we have now will continue to make that effort to reinstate her important lifesaving work. People who come to California from all over the world and enjoy the open spaces that we have here, including our great deserts, see the legacy of Dianne Feinstein. She sponsored the California Desert Protection Act, which established Death Valley National Park and Joshua Tree National Park and the Mojave National Preserve. And so there are millions of acres of California that have been preserved and stand as her legacy. And of course, more recently, we know that while she was a member of the Senate Intelligence Committee and a one of the strongest voices we have in this country on foreign policy issues and as a faithful supporter of America's defense, she stood up courageously and insisted that things like enhanced interrogation that our intelligence agencies were engaged in at the time came to an end. And she brought them to the public's view and she brought an end to torture practices that were being committed by our own intelligence agencies in our name. As we look around this chamber today and we see, you know, something very close to gender equity in this city council chambers, I think all of us know that we owe so much of this legacy to the leadership that Senator Feinstein demonstrated as in local office and in the United States Senate. Her career was one of integrity, of courage, of reaching out and trying to bring people together instead of polarizing people. And all of California and all of the United States really owes an incredible debt of gratitude to a woman who started off with a very difficult childhood and who persisted to the- she, I read today, which I hadn't known this. The day before she was going to take her SAT, she was being threatened by her mother, who her mother had struggles with mental illness, it seems, and would actually threaten her. Chased her around on some occasions with a knife. And the night before she was going to take her SAT, her mother kicked her out of the house. So she sat in her car and prepared for the SAT and then went on to be admitted to Stanford and have one of the great careers in public service in our state's history. So that's the kind of woman that she was. I don't know that the that the gap that we are going to see with her loss can ever be filled by anybody comparable to the incredible leader that we had for so many decades in the United States Senate, Senator Dianne Feinstein, who was survived by her daughter, retired Superior Court Judge Catherine Feinstein. I'd ask that we all join in adjourning this motion in memory of one of California's great leaders, California United States Senator Dianne Feinstein. Councilmember Blumenthal?
Thank you. I just wanted to add on to that. She was an icon and will always be an icon and an inspiration. I've had the good fortune and privilege to interact with her in many different ways over the last thirty years, wearing different hats. I first got to really meet her when I was a staffer in Washington in nineteen ninety-two when she was elected. I was part of the California delegation, being a staffer for Howard Berman. And she was running to replace, to fill out Pete Wilson's term. And we all dug in for that election. And as you mentioned, it was truly monumental to try to understand what happened there. It was amazing. And she was then this incredible senator. And I just remember lots of different times with her. In ninety-four, with the earthquake hit, that was centered in Howard Berman's district and actually in my district now, in Reseda, is where it was actually centered. She was a big part of that and I remember during these intense conference committee meetings, when the Senate and the House gets together and it's a small room of people in the back, having these late-night discussions because this bill had to be done by the next day and how she was working meticulously, particularly on this issue of immigration because the Republicans at the time didn't want to have the benefits flow to anyone who was not a citizen. And we went back and forth and came for some really interesting language to solve that problem. And I just remember her tenacity in that. And tenacity really marks her, is one of her hallmarks. Anybody who's dealt with her over the years, tenacious is the nice way to put it. You know, I mean, she's just a bulldog on things. And I had good fortune when I was in the Assembly to work with her on a few things when the budget was falling apart. She wanted to be kept informed and she had her office calling my team regularly because she was worried about the state's social safety net and she wanted to be helpful in that. I had occasion to work with her on a few things when I was with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And again, she is a preservationist. You mentioned some of the bills and the Desert Tortoise Act. But she also was key in expanding this national, the Santa Monica National Recreation Area, creating the Rim of the Valley and being part of that. She's just been involved in so, I mean, you look at the history, so many things that we take for granted now that she was part of and that she was a leader in. So it is a great loss. It's the end of an era. You know, I will miss her personally, even though I wasn't that close with her, but I had these interactions. But more importantly, we will all miss her collectively because she was a great leader who helped move this state forward. So may she rest in peace.
Here, here. Councilmember Hatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, in the previous administration, I had the great fortune to work with her, not just on national things, but things of California. The previous administration oddly was trying to stop some important transportation here in Los Angeles. And it was myself and her director, Peter Mueller, that we had to sit down and brief her on how stopping the purple line was going to be restrictive in people movement in Los Angeles. And so she and Senator Harris worked really diligently to fight the administration and bring that three billion dollars back into Los Angeles. And that was some real proud work for me. I was really honored to sit in front of her and and then US Senator, now Vice President Harris, and really push for jobs, for union jobs and for the work that we still see being done. And that was just one of the examples of how she fought when she could. So, you know, I talked to a summer routine this morning. They really feel the loss, but they felt like it was the right place to work and the right person to work for. So may she rest in eternal power. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. In memory of United States Senator Dianne Feinstein, this meeting is adjourned.
Back in two thousand and six and we started the trend to set that bar, to reduce the admissions back to, you know, pre like nineteen ninety-six levels. We have continued through Governor Jerry Brown and now Governor Gavin Newsom to increase those standards, those mandates. We are now the capital of the electric vehicle world, right? His last mandate was all passenger vehicles sold have to be electric vehicles by 2035. So that means there's an influx of EV charging companies, car manufacturers, battery storage. I mean, this is really where everything's happening.
Unrelated to all of these state subjects, you also are a member of SAG-AFTRA. So did you dabble in film and television at one point in time?
Yes, I did. So when Willie Brown was the mayor of San Francisco. Willie Brown is an avid movie critic, but he loved having movies in San Francisco. So we had tons of filming. Robin Williams lived in San Francisco. Treasure Island was a film, big film studio. Nash Bridges was filming in San Francisco. And so I had a lot of extra. I call them Taft Hartley extra work. And so I managed to do three Taft Hartley projects and-
You got your card.
My SAG card. However, I have my card since two thousand and seven and I've never earned a penny. But I continue to pay the dues and stand with my brothers and sisters who are out there on the picket lines.
I was going to say, that's one of the reasons that we have the good fortune of having you with us today is that you are standing in solidarity with with the Writers Guild and with SAG-AFTRA. So what have you seen and heard out there?
Well, things have changed, right? Post-COVID, a lot of streaming companies have come online, a lot of content building and AI. For example, I did not know that, you know, the studios would like to use someone's likeness in whatever format they want without paying them any residuals. And so that is kind of the fight about the future, right? Actors, writers, they're the creative ones. They're putting in, they're sweating tears. They went to school for that and then they're not getting fairly compensated. Yet the studios are making a lot of money, all of them. And so this is what the fight is right now.
Well, and of course, the entertainment industry at large is a critical industry here in Southern California.
Absolutely.
Entertainment capital, but it's also a good tax resource and also a good draw for tourism and all those sort of things. So I imagine that there is a governmental tie over and above the individuals that are in the strike. So you, as you mentioned, began this life of service a while back. What is your belief that government offers to the populace at large, but that also allows you to say, I'm giving my I'm giving my time and energy and passions towards this pursuit?
Yeah, I think government does provide the safety net. I think that's first and foremost. And a lot of people always say, well, why doesn't government act more like business? And I said, well, when business is doing great, everyone has a job. That's great. But when the economy goes down, people get laid off, all of a sudden, they don't have a job, they don't have healthcare, they don't have retirement. And then who's going to assist them? That's government. So government and business are not alike, but we work hand in hand. And it's important that both are doing their job.
All right, so if someone wants to find out about the treasurer's office and find out what you're doing and find out how they can access some of these programs that you have so generously shared with us today, what's the best way for people to find out?
Yep, my website is www.treasurer.ca.gov. Everything is on my website.
Well, it's been a pleasure chatting with you. This has been really, really wonderful. Thank you and come back.
Thank you. Thank you for your-
And that's a wrap on this LA Current.
Hello, everyone. I'm Natalia Bilbao and here's what's happening in LA this week. Another step forward in decreasing homelessness. West Terrace is a new housing project recently inaugurated by city officials. Aside from a comfortable home, it will provide additional support services to help its residents succeed in life.
I will tell you, this is the best way ever to spend the Saturday. Yeah! A wonderful, wonderful accomplishment in our community.
Today, we're opening up West Terrace Housing Development for some of the folks that couldn't find a place to stay, that were in encampments, that were in the streets. It is housing for families, housing for individuals, housing for couples. And so we're super excited to be here and super excited to celebrate because it's always a celebration where we're able to bring our neighbors from off the street into housing.
I'm a senior at this time, but I don't look it. I didn't know where I was going to go. This building is like a community. We are closed in and it's secure. So we're like a family.
Once they move in, the rent is very affordable. They pay 30% of their income for rent. And we have the services here in the building for the tenants to stay stable in housing. We have activities, we have programs, we have classes, all that the tenants need to be able to live independently and to live fulfilling lives.
This process has been very, very difficult and required a lot of people to do a lot of hard work. Folks may not remember, we got started with the process and then the pandemic hit. And so we went through a lot of months and years of uncertainty and work stoppages. And then after the pandemic was over, we had the worst rainy season we've had in a generation here in L.A. So that also created challenges for the construction. But people kept at it. For people who live in the area, if you go to church in the area, if you work in the area--